Good morning. Good morning. That reminds me of our church. It's good to see people that are enjoying themselves for a meeting. I call to order the meeting of Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees. We appreciate your interest in Alabama Community College System and we welcome you here. On vacation, I'm going to introduce Pastor Dwayne Rembert from Flatline Church Chisholm. Pastor Dwayne Rembert is a native of Linden, Alabama. He's married to his best friend of 22 years, Leslie, and they are proud parents of three children, Devon, Dorian, and Journey. In 2014, he was led to leave the corporate world and start a ministry called Flatline Movement. He was Washington Park's first youth pastor when he developed their youth program. He is now the lead pastor of Flatline Church at Chisholm. He has an advanced diploma from Sanford University's MIT program. He is also a current student at New Orleans Baptist Theological Seminary as one of the chaplains at Percy Julian High School, formerly Lee High School Athletic Program. Pastor Rembert is also on staff with Montgomery Baptist Association as the church planning strategist, urban evangelist, and is an evangelist for the conference at Southern Baptist Evangelist. Pastor Rembert wrote his first book in 2018 called Flatline: To Engage, and he is featured in the documentary film entitled Fruit, which is now on PBS. Please help me welcome Pastor Rembert.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So grateful to be here today. It's an honor that I get to say this prayer for you all this morning. So if you don't mind, let's bow head and let's pray. All right, Father God, in the mighty, awesome, powerful, matriculous name of the name that's above every name, and that name is Jesus, we come to you this morning, Lord God, grateful and thankful that you have woke us up this morning, Lord God, and allowed us to come out and participate in this wonderful meeting, Lord God. Want to bring to you right now, just let your feet, the members of the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees, Lord God, asking that you would help them, Lord God, as they participate in their policymaking and their governance, Lord God, and ask them that you also be with them and give them guidance and direction as they deal with their budget and their financial oversight. Lord God, also help them with the curriculum oversight, Lord God, and all the burdens that it would take to continue to, for this organization to function in a way that will bring you glory. God, I ask that you would bless their families, Lord God, and you know everything that's going on, Lord God, so even clear their minds and their hearts right now as they prepare and be focused on what it is that you have them to do in this particular hour right here, Lord God. So we just thank you again for this day. Thank you for your love for us, Lord God, and thank you for loving us, God. And we do love you, but we do know that we're only able to love you because you first loved us. It's in Jesus' name that we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Rembert. Please stand for our pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeff Shale?
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Present.
Ms. Valerie Gray?
Present.
Mr. Judith Rogers?
Present.
Mr. Ron Houston?
Present.
Mr. Levellin Rowan?
Present.
Mr. Tim McCarthy?
Present.
Mr. Ritten Leising? Mr. Ritten Leising. Dr. Yvette Richardson?
Present.
Governor Kay Ivey?
Okay, thank you. Now I have our approval of our agenda. Our agenda was distributed in advance, but the board members for their review allow now entertain a motion for approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Ron.
I'll say.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion carries unanimously. The September 11th meeting minutes were sent ahead of time, too, will now entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
So moved by Jeb. Second. Second by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion carries. And we don't have anybody sign up for public comment. College Spotlight, Coastal Alabama Community College.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chancellor Baker, members of the Board of Trustees, thank you for allowing me to speak of the fantastic things that are taking place at Coastal Alabama Community College. Our faculty, staff, and administration take tremendous pride in offering opportunities in higher education and workforce development for the citizens who reside in 20% of Alabama's landmass. Our employees at Coastal Alabama take pride in this large responsibility and see our task not as a burden, but rather an opportunity to impact southwest Alabama. On June 7th of this year, my wife and I had just arrived in Panama City Beach when we witnessed something that I had never seen before. In all my years of going to our family home at the beach, a helicopter was going up and down the shoreline demanding swimmers exit the water. And little did we know, a young lady named Lulu Gribby had been attacked by a shark in the Rosemary Beach area of Highway 38. And later that weekend, I was made aware that a Coastal Alabama Community College graduate named Delaney Quinley had played a vital role in saving her life.
When you are starting something new, it's never easy. You're going to make mistakes. You'll doubt yourself, but you're in a place that wants you to succeed, thrive, and soon it will just start to feel right. Suddenly, you'll get it. Your fear will turn to confidence. First-time tasks become second nature, and what seemed impossible is right in front of your eyes. Because once the light bulb goes on, there's no turning back. You may wonder how you got here, and be glad you did. That's Coastal Alabama. This is where you'll thrive.
My name's Delaney Quinley. I'm a registered nurse at Children's and Women's Hospital. I work on the mother-baby unit, and what we essentially focus on is taking care of moms' postpartum and helping them bond with their babies. Working on the mother-baby unit is my dream job. It's my favorite thing that I do. It's something that I've always wanted to do. It was the weekend of June 7th, 2024, down in Rosemary Beach. We had decided to go to the beach kind of that first day of our trip, and we were enjoying the water. Everything was nice and great, and we were having a great time. We decided to get out, and that's whenever I'd heard screams, and the shark had bitten a little girl. And as they were pulling her out of the water, that's whenever I saw the extent of her injuries, and nothing could have done that damage other than a shark. I was hoping that it could have been anything else, but ultimately, she had been a victim of a shark attack. She was in and out of consciousness on the beach, and I remember my training at school. I remember the things that I had been taught and just the necessity of, you know, stopping the bleed and trying to keep her conscious and keep her alive until the EMTs were there and able to transfer her to a higher-acuity hospital. She lived, and she's doing an amazing recovery. Although she lost two of her limbs, she's doing therapy. She's regaining strength. She's learning how to live her life differently, but in a way that none of us could have imagined. I will forever be changed by that day. It is just something that is, something that will forever live with me and remind me of why I became a nurse. I chose Coastal because of the accelerated program and it only being a year and a half. I knew that I wanted to be a nurse, and I wanted to be a nurse as soon as possible. I also know that Coastal has a really great reputation, and they have a really high NCLEX pass rate, and it is very vigorous, but they train their nurses very well, and that was something that I wanted to be a part of. Because of my education at Coastal, I was able to pass my NCLEX on the first try. I was able to land my dream job at Children's and Women's Hospital. I was able to be prepared for situations even outside of that, like saving this little girl's life on the beach that day, and I credit it all to Coastal. It wasn't easy by any means, but I am prepared, and I'm prepared for anything. If you're thinking about becoming a nurse, Coastal Alabama will prepare you to do so. It's one of the most rigorous programs out there, but it will prepare you and it will make you a great nurse.
This event was a reminder to our faculty, staff, and administration that we're doing more than just educating students. In all of our areas, we are doing something that has an impact on someone's life, and in this case, the ultimate impact. I'm very pleased to be joined today by four of our outstanding leaders at Coastal Alabama Community College. Ms. Sarah Davis is our chief communications officer, who was responsible for the production of that video. Dr. Natalie Dukes is our director of allied health. Dr. Tyler Sturtevant is our director of nursing, and who I call the captain of our ship in all things medical-related, Dr. Tiffany Scarborough, who serves as our dean of nursing and allied health. These folks are the leaders who empowered Delaney to make the decisions she made on that fateful day. Proud of you. So Chancellor Baker and members of the Board of Trustees, again, thank you for the support you give our colleges and employees. If you ever wonder the difference you are making, I certainly hope you can fall back on the impact of this young girl's life being saved by a graduate of Coastal Alabama Community College and the Alabama Community College system. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Milner, and thank you for the job that you all do, turning out healthcare graduates that can save lives. We'll now move into Section 8, Executive Legal and Public Information Action, item 8A1, which is Wallace State Community College Hansfield Approval of a Special Building Fee Increase. Is recommend to Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Wallace State Community College Hansfield to increase its special building fee from $10 to $16 per credit hour. The fee will take effect spring semester 2025 and bring in $730,000 additional revenue annually. Do we have a motion?
So.
Tim, second by Ron. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion is unanimous. Thank you. Next, item 8A2, Southern Union State Community College Request for Approval of Endowment for the Arts Campaign. Is recommend to Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the president of Southern Union State Community College to launch a naming opportunity initiative for the endowment of the arts, and this will be $1,000 to $1,500 per naming opportunity. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Gray, second?
Second.
Second, Levellin. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item 8A3 is at Northeast Alabama Community College Request for Approval to Name Women's Softball Stadium. Is recommend to Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the president of Northeast Alabama Community College to name the new women's softball stadium as the Nathaniel Ledbetter Stadium to add appropriate signage. The president of Northeast Alabama Community College requests to name the new women's softball stadium in honor of and recognition of Speaker of the Alabama House Representative Nathaniel Ledbetter. Speaker Ledbetter was instrumental in securing the special appropriations that provide funding for the women's softball stadium. Speaker Ledbetter is a longstanding supporter of Northeast Alabama Community College System and the Alabama Community College System, and there were many letters of support for this naming opportunity. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Houston, second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Gray, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously. Item 8A4, Alabama Community College System Recommendation Regarding Adoption of Revised Policy 222.01, Open Records Request As Shown. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees adopt the Revised Policy 222.01, Open Records Request. It is further recommend that the policy be deemed effective as of October 1st, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Gray.
Second.
Second, Jeb, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Next, Item 8A5, Gaston State Community College Approval for Naming of the Precision Machining Laboratory. It is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the President of Gaston State Community College to name the Precision Machining Lab in the Advanced Manufacturing Workforce Skills Training Center as the Gene Haas Center for Advanced Machining and Engineering Technology and to add appropriate signage. This is a $1 million gift from the Gene Haas Foundation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Schell, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, Item 8A6, Shelton State Community College Amendment to the Bookstore Operation Agreement, Barnes &amp; Noble College Booksellers LLC. It is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the President of Shelton State Community College to amend its bookstore operation and services agreement with Barnes &amp; Noble College Booksellers LLC, entered into on April 4th, 2022, to include the first-day complete textbook rental program beginning with the spring 2025 semester, and to charge a $24 per credit hour fee for textbook rental. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Levin, second.
Second.
Second, Ron, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move into Section 9, which is Instruction, Research, and Development, Adult Education, Facilities, Fiscal Information Technology, and Workforce Development. And the first item, Action A1, is the Alabama Community College System Revised Salary Schedules for 2024-25. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees adopt the attached 2024-25 Revised Salary Schedules for the community and technical colleges. This revision requires no change to the previously approved fiscal considerations. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Gray, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 9A2, Wallace Community College Dothan, Addition of an Instructional Site. It is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve an additional instructional site for Wallace Community College Dothan. This will be at the Dale Medical Center in Ozark, Alabama. Motion by Mr. Mitchell, second. All right, Jeb, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 9A3 is at Reed State Technical College, also addition of an instructional site. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve an additional instructional site for Reed State Technical College. Reed State Technical College has a longstanding collaboration with Butler County and the City of Georgiana Healthcare Entities, Workforce Office, and local officials. The college is the recipient of an Alabama Centers for Rural Healthcare Opportunity Grant to support healthcare training in Georgiana. This is a significant step towards enhanced healthcare training in the rural communities in Reed Service Area. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second, Tim, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 9A4 is at Coastal Alabama Community College, the Bruton Campus Multi-Building Reroofing and Repair. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Coastal Alabama Community College to proceed with Phase 2 of the project named Bruton Campus Multi-Building Reroofing and Repair. This is the auditorium building bid package. Construction contracts for Phase 2 shall be executed no later than January 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Schell, second.
Second.
Ron, have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have Item 9A5, which is at Reed State Technical College, Building 900 renovation. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Reed State Technical College to proceed with the project named Building 900 Renovation. This is demolition hazardous bid package. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than January 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Is there a motion? Mr. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Schell, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have Item 9A6, which is Shelton State Community College Martin Campus Second Floor Renovations. It is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Shelton State Community College to proceed with the project named Martin Campus Second Floor Renovations, Swing Space, F, F, and E, and Telecom Audio Visual. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than January 31st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Levin, second.
Second.
Mr. Houston, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion passes. We'll now have Item 10, Personnel.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Charlene Finkelstein with Human Resources, and as usual, it's my pleasure to introduce some fabulous new people to our staff. First of all, we're going to start with Morgan Bowman. Morgan, would you stand up? Morgan is our new IT Operations Technician. Although she's young, she has extensive experience in the IT field. She served five years in telecommunications for the State Office of Information Technology, as she has served almost the last year here at the ACCS System Office as a contract employee at doing system operations technician work. She has attended Southern Union State Community College, and she is based here with us at the System Office. Thank you, Morgan. Drew Whit. Drew Whit is our new Internal Communications Coordinator. She also is very young, but has extensive experience in the political field. She interned for Senator Tommy Tubberfield, Agricultural Commissioner Rick Pate, Lieutenant Governor Ainsworth, and Governor Rydick. She most recently served as Director of Marketing for Winter Timber Outdoors in Athens, Alabama. She has a bachelor's degree in Mass Communication and Political Science from the University of North Alabama, and she is based here with us at the System Office as well. Thank you. Nick Nolan. Nick is out here with us in the audience. He is our new Regional Project and Facilities Director. He has over 13 years of experience in the major construction field. He served seven years as project engineer, project manager, and superintendent on various major construction projects in the Columbus and Atlanta, Georgia areas. He's also served over the last six years at Auburn University as construction project manager and estimator. He has a bachelor's degree in construction management from Southern Polytechnic State University, and he is based at Southern Union State Community College. Thank you, Nick. And Alan Bates. Alan, would you stand? Alan is a new Special Assistant to our Chancellor. He has over 14 years of experience in finance and workforce development, served over nine years as financial analyst, CFO, and treasurer for the Alabama Power Company. He most recently served as project manager and workforce development coordinator for Alabama Power, has a bachelor's degree in economics and finance, and a master's in business administration, both from Auburn University, War Eagle, and he is based here with us at the System Office. So would you please help me welcome these four fabulous new folks to the staff?
We're delighted to have you all here, and there's nothing wrong with being young either. We're glad to have you. Thank you. Now we'll have Item Number 11, Chancellor's Report.
Well, good morning, Board, Chairman Rogers, and Chancellor Baker. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide an enrollment update for where we are with Fall 2024. My first slide has a typo in it. That should say as of October 8th, 2024. We have over 90,000 students registered for four-credit courses, 90,384 students. At this moment, of course, this number is still climbing. In fact, as of this morning, it was over 90,500, but at some point, I have to cut it off to be able to create a PowerPoint, right? But as of yesterday, an 8.4 increase over Fall 2023. This is over 7,000 more students than we had registered for four-credit classes in Fall 23, and it's the highest fall headcount since Fall 2011. And at this moment, 23 of our colleges have increased headcount over last fall. Then we start looking at credit hour production. We have over 765,000 credit hours that our students are registered for. That's a 6.13% increase over Fall 2023, 44,000-plus more credit hours. That is our highest fall credit hour production since 2017, and again, 23 of our colleges have increased credit hour production. So this is something that is really, really special. Again, and I'm going to show a little bit more about where these increases fell, and I think you'll see the significance of this, but again, we continue to be an outlier while across the country, community college enrollment is starting to rebound a little bit. It's not rebounding at the rate that we are. I do want to show this because this gives a little bit of scale. At some point, we know that we probably will start to level off our enrollment increases, but that is not happening just yet. You can see from Fall 2019 to Fall 2020, we took a significant dip, and as you can imagine, that is the year where we were deeply impacted by a pandemic, but our enrollment dropped, our four-credit enrollment dropped over 12%. But from Fall '20 to Fall '21, we rebounded by 6.43%, and then again, the next year, by 4.05%, then again, by 6.18%. This year, our increase went up, as I mentioned in the last slide, 8.4%. And so our enrollment increases are accelerating, which is something that's really exciting. We hope to see that continue for the next few years, and we think that with the support that you continue to give the System Office and our colleges, that they are certainly well-equipped to do so. Those key growth areas that I mentioned a moment ago, I asked our Instructional Division, and particularly Kelly Birchfield and Jessica Carroll there in the organizational research and effectiveness area, to pull some data for us, and some of the data that they came back with is really, really promising. New first-time freshman numbers increased by 6.87% compared to last year, when our increase was less than 1% in first-time freshmen. A lot of our growth continues to be in dual enrollment, but this year, we had a sizable increase in new first-time freshman students. So this is very exciting. Dual enrollment, we did see another significant increase, 17.66%. Our increase last year was 16.31%. We've also seen increases in all ages. In 24 or younger, those traditional age students, we saw a 7.81% increase. Those students who are over 24, we saw an 8.02% increase. In Black and African-American students, 9.15% increase. The Associate in Arts and Associate in Science degree plans, those numbers went up by 9.83. In our Associate in Applied Science, those numbers went up by 8.56%, and in our certificate programs, 15.71%. I'll also mention, I didn't include it on the slide, but our number of students who have not declared a degree program dropped significantly, and what that tells us is that our colleges are working diligently to ensure that when a student enrolls, they are enrolled in a degree plan. They're not just enrolled in class, and so they are working towards something. So that's something very promising to see as well. In our workforce and adult education areas, since August 1st, 2024, over 7,000 students have registered in workforce development programs. And as I've mentioned in most board meetings, those students can enroll in multiple programs, so we have over 8,450 total registrations. So in our ACE, our ACE MAPS and AMP program in the workforce area and helped led by our adult education program, that's over 1,700 students. Continuing education is 277. Skills for Success in the Innovation Center is over 4,300 since August 1st, so that's very significant. Testing and certifications in workforce, 242. Training in business and industry, over 1,000, and in workforce education, 733. We also have almost 8,000 registrations for adult education. That includes our Adult Basic Education, GED, and English as a Second Language programs. And since that time, we've had 107 people complete the GED, and we've had 334 NCRC work keys completers. So we're growing like crazy, and again, I just appreciate the support that you provide our colleges, and I want to commend our colleges and their presidents and their leadership and their student services teams for the tremendous, and workforce and adult education teams as well, for the tremendous work that they are doing. And as we saw in Coastal Alabama's video earlier, these are not just numbers. These are individuals, and these individuals are being well-equipped to go out into our state and make life better for everyone. So thank you. I'll take any questions that you have.
Neil, great job in community college presence, all your presence, and your staff's. Great job. Appreciate the work. Awesome.
Let me mention something, because this board spends hours, a lot of time, looking at construction projects. We are doing a world of work around the state, and that's part of why these numbers are what they are. And I know last week, we had the occasion to dedicate a new workforce center up at Northeast a week before at Albertville. And I don't know about you, but every time I drive up to one of those new centers, if you haven't seen them, you need to, I want to get out and go in and see what this really looks like, because it's a different environment. It's a different feeling that students get when they walk into the center in Mobile and see what's there. And I think a lot of that is a significant reason for why our enrollment is increasing. The key to it is we must continue moving forward and stay current with what is needed in the workforce community, and we are the entity that is providing training for workforce. And I like to take pride in what is being done across the state. This board has spent hours you don't even see when they're on telephone going through projects and projects and more projects. And our presidents are spending a lot of time studying and looking and trying to figure out how can we make this a more attractive environment? And I just want to know, I want everyone to know that there's a lot of work and effort going on in all of our schools and by our board and committees and our employees here to make a big statement about we are in the business of making life better for everybody. And as we continue, the state will reap rewards.
Amen. Committee reports, I'm not aware of any. Okay, our date, location, we'll move right into the work session here. Here in just about two minutes, we'll start the work session, and then we'll be back here in November, on November 13th, in this room at 10:00 a.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
So moved. Second. Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Neil. All those in favor. We've got a lot on your agenda.
[inaudible]
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 We have some who are 70-year-olds, but you know, who wants to raise it? Right now, we're talking about negative two, yes and. He wants to go back to the table. So we're able to find a happy 4,000, which would be 4,000. So in favor of that, there's a reason. I really don't like this. Who's going to lease you that 4,000?
Amen.
That will allow people.
That's what I said, these people are embarrassing. And then, who to make it?
So how's the absenteeism going? Been improving?
Well, in reference to how students tested, it is some of those things that isn't on the table.
We'll now start our work session.
Over there, about two rows back.
David O'Brien.
Good morning to you all. The first item on the work session agenda is the annual schedule for the board's meeting dates and places. Does anyone have any questions relating to the proposed schedule? I'm going to take the next two items together. They are both relating to the purchase of insurance for next year. First, general liability and garage liability, and then, second, our cyber liability policy. We are still awaiting quotes from the various insurers, which we hope to have within the next week, and we'll provide that information to you as soon as we have it. Any questions? The next item is a request from Drake State. The college is requesting that the Board of Trustees authorize the president to name the Advanced Manufacturing Center at the college as the Lidos Advanced Manufacturing Center, and to name the Computer Information Systems Lab in Building 500 as the Lidos Lab, and to add appropriate signage at each of the buildings. All of this will be in exchange for a pledge that the Lidos Corporation will pay the college the sum of $1,750,000 over a five-year period. The amount of that amount, $1 million, will be allocated for the exclusive naming rights with regard to the Advanced Manufacturing Center and the lab. 250 of those dollars will be directed towards supporting the Advanced Manufacturing System and Computer Information programs at the college. 200 will be used to upgrade the technical infrastructure of the college. 200 will be used to establish scholarship endowments. 200,000, I'm sorry, and the remaining 100,000 will be used to fund faculty externships and skill development programs. Does anyone have any questions relating to this item?
Excellent, President Sam.
The remaining items, I believe, are all facilities items. Mark?
Thank you, David. Good morning, board members, and Chancellor Baker. This morning, we have six items to present to the board. One takes us to Central Alabama, three at Jefferson, one at LBW down in Andalusia, and the last one takes us to Reed State. At Central Alabama, board members, at the Alexander City campus, we have a project that we are focused on repurposing the library for healthcare and science programs. In this particular slide here and in your packet, we have the existing library that is on the campus there. And in this particular building, we included in your packet slides that show the openness of the space. It's a very robust and large building. It's a beautiful building in the architecture. But as we look at it, the college has deemed it appropriate to try to take the space, repurpose it, and right-size the library program. So in doing so, you can begin to see the build-out of the first floor here, that as we take and shuffle some bookshelves around and open it up, that we are now introducing space for nursing, labs, offices, and so forth that will support that program at Alexander City. We go upstairs, and similar condition exists. There's very much an openness to this space. We do have a theater AMP-type room, if you will, and other large computer lab space. But then, in the design that we've taken, we're building out a second floor and a lot of the openness of the building to add a chemistry lab, a biology lab, and so forth for the program, where they can have those sciences readily available for nursing and for the rest of the students on the campus, and then some additional classroom and office spaces that are built out. Board members, we do expect to be able to put this product out to bid going into the November-December timeframe, and then bringing this back for board action as we begin the new calendar year in 2025. Any questions about the Alexander City repurposing of the library for health sciences and the nursing program? The next project, board members, the next three, take us down to Jefferson. The first one is George Wallace Hall, and this is a simple project in terms of just doing a re-roofing. We've highlighted it here on the screen and outlining it in yellow so you can see it. And so it's essentially just a building and a roof that has developed some leaks, and it's beyond its design life, so we'll take bids later on at the end of this month and bring those bids back to you for action in the November board meeting. Any questions about the re-roofing of the George Wallace Building? The next one is also a roofing project. This one takes us over to the northeast of the campus, and this is the Harold Martin Building. This is where our mortuary sciences is taught, and is a very successful program, but we do have some leaks on this building as well, and so we're moving this product forward, and we do expect to take bids sometime later in October, and you may or may not see this coming back to you. We do have some early estimates that suggested that it would bid and come in at a price that did not require board action, but we may be back to see you next month with this. And then the last project that we have at Jefferson is the relocation of the welding lab that is currently located in the Carson Building, and then taking it and setting it up so it's functioning down in the Manufacturing Technology Center in the lower right-hand corner. This is a program that is growing. Dr. Brown and the college continue to very intentionally grow this workforce effort, and so we're developing and taking space in the tech building and repurposing it so that we can fit into that location a very nice welding sciences program. We do expect that bids will come in at the end of this month and being able to come back and report out to the board for action in the November board meeting. Any questions about the welding sciences program being relocated into the Technology The next project, board members, takes us down to Andalusia, to Lorlimby Wallace Community College, and this is for the acquisition and purchase of Shadowwood Apartment Complex. There are three, excuse me, 4.03 acres identified within a horseshoe space on the campus there that is surrounded with, on three different sides, by the community college. And so, over the last year or so, the college has been very proactive in raising and identifying a need to have more housing and resident life types space for their students. And so we have actually contemplated looking at perhaps a building solution when this particular apartment complex came on the market. So it is very much a welcome addition to LBW and to the campus and to the needs of the students to provide more bed space for their students that are asking to be able to live on on campus. We do have on this complex four buildings that are this particular type here that were constructed back in 1982, and then two others that were built a few years later that were constructed in 2004 that are a little bit newer. But they do have, in totality, 30 bed space or 30 bedrooms, and depending on how the college wants to divide up that space, they perhaps could double up and increase the number of rental units that they can give to the students. This particular property, board members, getting ahead of myself, we do expect to be able to close on that over the next 30 to 40 days and bring this back for final action in a November-December timeframe. We're currently going through our due diligence as we look at environmental and other items as we prepare to move to close. Any questions about LBW and the purchase of Shadowwood Apartments? And then the last one takes us over to the, a little bit to the west, to Reed State. They're in Evergreen, and this brings us back to the conversation we had last week, or last board meeting in terms of the purchase of some of the properties there for the college. Specifically, this is the acquisition of the Black Angus property. This is a restaurant that is located there near the college on about a .65-acre parcel of land, and located just to the south and to the west. It's about a half a mile from the campus for the students to walk to it, a little bit less than that, in fact. And so this particular purchase of Black Angus is intended to become a food service solution for the students and for those that will eventually come into a housing solution or on-campus housing solution at the college. This will also service the community, but the college does have the intent to work out an arrangement for whoever the food service provider is to give the students priority and preference in terms of food service. This is a little bit of the space that we see there in the interior, and a little bit of the parcel as is described in this particular legal description. Board members, any questions about the purchase of the Black Angus property? We do expect that we'll bring this back to you for action as early as November. It's in due diligence right now, and we do expect that if it goes a little longer, it'll be in the December board meeting. Board members, any questions about any of the projects? Board members, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. President Boykin, we look forward to eating lunch there one day soon. Mark, Sam, and David O'Brien, thank you very much. Word travels fast. Boone's already gotten a text from Speaker of the House, Nathaniel Ledbetter, who wanted to convey his appreciation to this board, and said he was truly humbled for naming that softball complex at Northeast. If there's no more business for us, we stand adjourned.